Okay, it now being six o'clock, I will call the Monday September 18th meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded for cable cast and YouTube presentation by Area 58, Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. Our Chair Christine Joy is absent tonight, she's actually in Tampa. First agenda item is a meeting with Jonathan, Jonathan Belozzo, Senior Sales Account Manager for AKUS. John, you want to come over? If you sit right there where that microphone is, then we can hear you. So, I invited Jonathan in because, as you know, we've been looking at projective system. Right now, when we have people come in if they wanted to use a PowerPoint, it's very cumbersome.
Yep.
And Steve Pello from the Silver Lake Regional School District sort of showed us what was going on at the Dennet, and apparently that's been cookie-cuttered through all the schools that are in the system. So, our worry is, we have a nice room, we don't want to tear it up. We're assuming that the screen would, I'm sorry, the screen would have to go on that wall?
Yes.
Okay. And maybe you can tell us, you know, you've seen other areas, how should we be laying this out so that it's easy for whoever comes in? We're gonna have to have a computer and table and equipment. So, we also have a podium over here that probably should be moved over here.
Okay, yeah, I would say that you'd want to put that podium in the location where the projection screen is. So if I was the one presenting to you right now, I would be standing to either the left or the right of the screen and kind of going over the PowerPoint presentation that's directly behind me on my right or left. So you would want to put a wall jack which would have HDMI, VGA, and 3.5, which are your typical digital and analog connections for either a laptop or a computer. That wall plate would then, you would plug your laptop via HDMI or VGA into that wall plate, and then the projector would play that content onto the screen. The screen in this case would be, it's actually like a dry erase board, either six by four or an eight by four, or, I mean, you have enough room here too where if you did want, you know, a larger board, you could probably do a 12 by four board on this wall.
Steve suggested an eight by four.
Eight by four, eight by four, six by four is the more typical size. With an eight by four, we can get about a 90 inch to 100 inch diag in the 16 by 10 format on that board. So your screen size is around 90 to 100 inches in diag.
Which is...
Which I think is a pretty good size for a room of this nature. You know, it's not an auditorium or a huge lecture hall or anything, so I think that's very much sufficient. The cabling itself, it seems like this wall, it seems like there's in-wall cabling within these walls, so we should be able to fish the cabling directly down into the projector so that you don't see any raceway or any surface mount EMT or any of that type of stuff. It's all in-wall.
Okay.
The projector itself would mount directly above the board, alright? So it's usually about 10 to 12 inches above the board. Presentation-wise for sound, we usually do, basically we could do two Epson wall speakers to the left or the right. If you want to get into some higher-end stuff, you can do ceiling speakers with a ceiling amp, but you know, typically what we're doing with the projection systems which makes it simple is a left and right wall speaker, and then basically anything that's playing through the projector is gonna play through those two speakers.
Now, how will that work with the cable system?
So, the cable feeds, I guess, basically we would have to take the audio from the presenter's laptop and tie that into the video switcher over there, which I took a peek at it earlier, and I do think that's somewhat possible. The video feed, there's an HDMI input available on that switcher so that we could possibly take the laptop feed that's showing on the projector and also have that as a broadcasted feed that he can tie into from that switcher. So if you wanted to not show the video of the room and you want to just so show page one of the PowerPoint presentation with the audio from either the presentation or these mics, you should be able to do that.
So we'd be able to switch back and forth?
Yes, but the switching would somewhat be live because he would need to choose which is what.
Right, he'd have to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, I didn't know any of that before this, so that proposal wasn't based specifically on doing that, but it certainly, I certainly have the ability to do it like that, yes.
Okay. Steve suggested that we also, the wall board be included in your...
Yeah, the dry erase.
Right.
Yep.
Because then it'll fall under warranty?
Yeah, so, I mean, the Epson system, because your town, is a three-year warranty. So basically, anything that goes wrong with the projector within the three years, as far as certain defects, obviously if you go up there and someone hangs on it and it breaks, that's a different story.
Sure, sure.
But, you know, defect-wise, the warranty's gonna be covered for three years. We typically see within the school systems that the lamp life lasts for around 3,000 or 5,000 hours. For a space like this, you're not gonna be using this eight hours a day like a school teacher's gonna be using it, so you're not gonna have to worry about replacing the bulb for a good three, four, five years even. And the bulb replacements are a lot lower cost than they used to be. They're around $79 to $100 now for a bulb replacement.
Okay.
Now, the quote that we provided is an interactive projector. And what an interactive projector allows you to do is use two interactive pens as the mouse on the computer. So essentially you can, it's like a smartboard, if anyone's seen a smartboard before, where you can use two pens to basically control the mouse on your computer from the board, not having to be up at your computer. That allows you to annotate on top of things, use certain slideshows.
Oh yeah, I think that's what we had.
I don't know if you need that or not, but we did...
Could you do it either way because ultimately we're gonna look to Steve Pello, I think, to say, "Hey, this makes sense for you."
The ones the schools are all doing are the interactive versions, but that's because the teachers do a lot of interacting with the students.
Right.
But it does save you some money if you go with the non-interactive version.
Yeah.
Really, the projector looks exactly the same, it's just the difference of interactive versus non-interactive.
Okay.
Alright.
What would we need for housing? Just a table, or what, what would you suggest seeing other places?
I mean, you're gonna have the eight by four dry erase board, you're gonna have the projector mounted above it, you can have the speakers to the left and right. It's really up to you guys whether you tell us to put the AV jacks on that side or this side. I very much recommend putting them on the same wall that the presentation system is on.
Okay.
So that's gonna be up to you. As far as housing goes, I mean, there's just gonna be a wall plate that you plug into, and you're gonna have a remote that you're gonna just turn the projector on with.
Now, do you come in and do the wiring, or do we...
So, I, we do the full turnkey installation. We do all the low voltage cabling.
Yep.
We have electrical services as well. I didn't provide that in the quote, but we can come in, tie off of an existing electrical line and bring that line to the projector, because the projector and speakers do need power.
Yep.
I don't know if the town provides that themselves, if they have facilities that does their own electrical...
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
Huh?
So...
What does he do?
He's an electrician.
Yeah, I know he's an electrician.
Yeah, I mean, it typically costs, you know, for, it's not a lot of electrical work, but it's a couple hundred dollars in electrical materials and...
Why don't you put it as a line item on the quote? That way we can, again, we'll run it by Steve. I don't even, he might even have somebody too.
Yeah.
Who he would recommend.
Okay.
And I think the goal is, turnkey is possible, but we're a town, we have to stay in budget, so a few options in there would be helpful.
Understood. Now, there is a pretty big difference in pricing whether or not we need to tie that laptop feed into your broadcast system as well, because it does require extra cabling and extra components to do that. I can certainly give you kind of option one, option two, so you can see the difference in pricing.
That would help.
But I will fair warn you that there is obviously a difference in, you know, the labor and some of the components that I need in order to do that, so...
And again, I guess I'm gonna look to Steve Pello...
Yeah.
...to help us, because I'm certainly not technical enough to do that. Question?
So, I guess there was some concern about the bead along there. The screen's gonna go up higher than that, right?
Yeah, so, I mean, that's gonna be really up to you guys to decide. I mean, obviously, within a school system, we typically mount it at, you know, I don't know the exact inches, but it's around 48 inches or so off the ground. In this case, we really have two options. We can mount the dry erase surface, which is technically the projection screen in this case, directly above that, kind of where the wall comes out there, which will, I guess it will be a little high for doing dry erase notes, but for presentation purposes, it may be better because it's at a higher height for people to see. So that's gonna be up to you guys if you do that. The other option we have is, you know, we can do some kind of backing on the backside of the dry erase board to make it somewhat flush with that onslaught.
Yeah.
And then mount to that backing, you know, a couple pieces of plywood or something like that.
We were thinking of having strips come down that we mount, so they would be mounted and it would be even with the bead.
Okay. We could do it, we could do it either way.
Yeah.
It's just really, as far as your preference goes. You know, I didn't see the room before, kind of throwing together the estimate, but you know, now that I saw it, I'm able to kind of provide you something a little bit more accurate.
Okay.
And your estimate include all the adapters and doodads for...
Yeah, I mean, we would give you your presentation cable kit, which would be like an HDMI, a VGA cord that you would use to plug a presenter's laptop into.
And that would include, if someone came in with an iPad...
Yeah, I'll even, what I will do is I'll give you like a MacBook adapter. It would be like a typical HDMI adapter for a MacBook.
Yeah.
Do you need an iPad adapter too?
Yeah.
Probably.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I can include those items, yeah.
Would you copy Steve on these?
Yeah.
So he sees what we're seeing?
Not a problem, yeah. I'll CC him on anything that I send over to you. Do I, I, yeah, I do have your email, so I'll send that over to you and Steve, and I'll break out both options and try to write out the scope like I did last time, just so you understand the differences.
Great.
And so, once we make our final decision on the options, what kind of timeframe are we looking at?
Right now, we're looking at anywhere from around three to four week lead time, as far as when we receive the purchase order to installation.
Because, once we get that in, John's gonna be so happy, it's gonna be so much fun to be around him.
Yeah, so, it's, you know, right now, we do a lot with the public schools, so we are still very much in busy season, which is a good thing. But it takes us about 10 business days to 15 business days usually to get all the hardware, dry erase boards, all that into our warehouse, and then as soon as that happens, our service staff gets in touch with you guys and kind of goes from there, but it's around anywhere from a two to four week lead time.
And it's one day to install everything?
Yeah, an installation like this would just be one day. And, you know, we could come during the day, we can come after hours, it's really up to you guys as far as timeframe-wise.
Beautiful.
Good. I appreciate you coming in.
Yeah.
Looking forward to it.
We very much appreciate you guys letting us come down and present this to you. The other thing I will add, just ending here, is we are a state contract vendor, so we do a lot of business with the state, so OFF 40 is the state contract, that something like this would go under.
Okay. We've received a grant that this is being done under, so...
Alright, no problem, perfect. Alright, thank you guys.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, I do.
Is this something that should be insured?
We can provide insurance certificates as needed, so...
You know, not being putting it in, that liability, but something to add...
So, yeah, I would think you'd want to add it to the blanket insurance we have.
It's around, I think, a quarter to $2,000.
Thank you.
So, the Board of Health is here?
Good evening.
Good evening. We're here to talk about your form, right?
I guess so. So we're on animal control officer.
Risk.
Alright. So, we have created this new incident form, I think you've seen it, we've added stuff to it. I think it covers most of the angles, has a lot of information on it. The real goal here was to kind of standardize the reporting, avoid kind of some of the confusion we've had on what constitute a report and doesn't constitute a report, so that was one goal. The other goal is to make sure that the agencies are reported to, to which they're supposed to be reported. Hence the third page where there's a note on the date that the report was submitted, to Board of Health, to the Police Department, to the Board of Selectment. So, I think we wanted a chance for the Board of Health to take a look at it, make sure they were comfortable with everything. I had an, sort of by chance, meeting with the Animal Control Officer last week. He was CC'd with his form as well, and I started the discussion to just make clear that we wanted to avoid the confusion that was going on, and made clear that by using this form for every incident, we could solve a fair amount of the problems that we've been having.
I think it takes a lot of the, you know, guessing out.
Yeah, my only comment would be the submission time.
And in the, alright, so that's piece number one. The second piece is, the Town Council sent us sort of a job description. I've taken that and kind of individualized it to point them. One of the essentials functions of the job includes a bullet point which says, "The job of the Animal Control Officer includes documenting all animal incidents, submitting approved incident report form within 24 hours to Board of Health, Board of Selectment, and Police." So essentially, I mean, we're making it clear, 24 hours. And we're noting that all follow-ups on any particular incident would also have to be documented and reported in the same way.
We want to be on the same page with you, so...
In the job description is also a clear description of the functions of the Animal Control Officer, which include the annual inspection of domestic animals. So that would have to be a different reporting thing, but it makes clear that that is an integral part of the job and an expected part of the report.
Now, if I may, I wasn't privy to what the now-Assisted Health Officer had sent to the Board of Selectment, but I understand there was a phone log. Do you recall that? Because this morning, I met with her this morning, and she said that's critical, because even if it comes in on a Friday, if that, the phone log was there, that Monday morning, our administrative assistant could, she would know to look for X or Y, you know, whatever it might be.
Well, what we put in the incident report document, the very first item, is date and time incident reported to the Animal Control Officer. And the next line is the person to who notified the Animal Control Officer. And the goal there is just to have it all on one form, and Frank has, the way Frank has worked is through the phone log, and I think some of the confusion is that, I think sometimes he's considered that the reporting vehicle, and we're trying to make this clearly understood by all parties as the reporting vehicle.
Okay, so this is just typically an incident report. What about the yearly reports that he's supposed to be submitting on inspections?
The yearly report is terms of annual inspections, yeah. So that's the last bullet point on the summary of position responsibilities, which reads, "Serves as the animal inspector, responsible for annual inspection of dogs and premises and domestic animals, and reports findings to the Board of Health and Board of Selectment."
On what frequency?
Pardon?
What frequency?
Yearly, annual.
Okay.
Do we want to have a date though? I mean, should it be within a month or...
That is generally done, I am remembering back 50 years ago, and my father was the annual inspector in Kingston, and had to go out and count the five cows that were left in Kingston. That was done on an annual basis or a calendar year basis. I suppose it's our option. I think maybe in this case, if we say it is calendar year, then we could expect that by the end of the year, which gives the present Animal Control Officer time to get it done.
But he can do it anytime during the year?
I think maybe the way, to add some words here, is we expect a report, an annual report, a calendar year report at the end of the year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know what goes in the annual, the report, town report.
Yeah, which is, I don't think we do it, or I'm not sure, I've seen it. The Kingston one used to have, and I've done my annual inspection and census, and there were five cows and three pigs and, you know, two horses. And that probably is what should be in the annual report.
There is a...
It makes riveting reading.
Tara's office needs to get notified of the incidents also.
Who should?
Tara's office, the clerk's office. They have reports in there, that's how we found reports of other dogs, and because they have the list of the babies and they give the licenses out, that's where they get the information of being caught up with vaccinations. So that you know.
I mean, I can add that. I'm not sure she wants to be inundated with every incident report along the way.
They have, they have cards, they have, she has information in her office on each. I've gotten them when we did it.
Then I, I'm glad to add that. So Tara would be reporting to as well, and the year-end census is calendar year. Maybe if we do the census or the inspection by the end of the calendar year and reporting in the first month of the new year?
Yeah. My concern is that it's done region every year. I've talked to several owners of multiple animals, or horses, or cobras, or llamas, or whatever, and I'm told that yes, they were inspected about every year.
Okay.
In some cases, they were inspected the day that they applied or whatever, and then never saw them again. I don't want that to get through.
Yeah, so we'll have it in this, so that it's documented.
We'll put it in there, and, you know, the goal right now is to just cover every angle there is to cover, and so whatever shortcomings or confusion there's been in the past, we can get past, get on to important stuff.
Excellent.
Okay?
Good, good.
Alright, you okay with all that?
Yep. When can we get a copy of that other report?
The summary of position responsibilities, it is right here. Pretty much, I'll give you each a copy. I will change the wording and, are we okay to move forward with that, or should we vote on it next week, or...
I think if, why don't we give Board of Health a chance to just glance it over, and if you're, if you're okay with it, then we'll vote it next week?
Okay. So if you have anything this week, get it to me, I'll put the final verbiages, I'd really like to finish this next week. I'll be glad to speak to Frank a little later in the week, and hopefully we can move on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay?
Very good.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming in. Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you.
Okay. We have another one? Uh, not that I know of.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm here for the Board of Health, waiting.
You're waiting for the Board of Health?
Yes.
Okay. That's your appointment.
Take your time.
No, we're done.
Oh, actually, we have one more item that may relate to Board of Health, which is the permitting application process. The third bullet under updates.
So, help me with that, we were talking about.
That was, that was the process of beginning to update our small event permit process. I had been working on that. Board of Health asked since they worked on the large event permitting process and did a great job on it, that they'd like to take a shot at that, and...
I think that, I think that's where it should come from, just that.
Right. So, I don't know if they have anything to add. The small event permitting process update?
Yeah, we would think at a, I don't know, $1,000 or $1,500 for many more than 10 people, so...
Oh, I thought you were gonna say like a thousand days to get it done, because it may take a thousand days.
Now we'll find out how many people really watch this.
Just kidding.
So, that's only to say it's gone off my plate and onto your plate for now.
It has, and we will probably not take it up until October because of one board member is traveling, will not be at our next meeting, so we'll schedule it for the next time.
And I, I've, I fully acknowledge how thorny it potentially is, and if it takes a while, that's, we understand why that might happen.
Well, I mean, the only reason we set those numbers was on your suggestion, you know?
Always our fault, always our fault at the end, always. Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're making progress.
Oh, good.
Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Hey.
Hi.
Thanks, Aaron. Community paradigm search. Really don't have anything more to say. I did send you the note Tom Coulter had sent.
Yep.
And I did talk to Bernie, and he was gonna talk to the fellow, he had already mentioned it to us, so we'll see what, where that goes. Other than that...
We just let the public know what we did last Wednesday, that we met with Bernie, that he told us we had a bunch of applicants, that I think Friday's the deadline.
Right. I think he had 18 applicants as of last Wednesday, and was looking forward to some more. He felt he had some good candidates in that mix. So we're looking forward to it. We've got a standing committee set up now that will start to interview to...
No, no other problem.
Get it down to three, and then it'll be up to Board of Selectmen to finally make the final choice.
And we have dates for all of those?
We do.
Running into October, so the process is moving right along?
Right. Feels comfortable.
The deadline is Friday, September 29?
25th, isn't it?
Oh, September 22nd, I mean, sorry. What is the deadline?
The deadline, I think, is September 29th, which is this... Is it?
Isn't it 29th of the...
Oh, or is it the 22nd?
22nd.
Which would be this Friday.
This Friday, I believe it is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Let's see, the fire and EMS, we did announce that we're going, we voted to move forward with MRI. They were going to ask for, they needed data requirements from the fire chief, and so they were gonna approach him directly. And we now have a new fire clerk, and we should be able to supply that. I think the estimate was that would take about two weeks to go through and start to put all the data together, then they would come in and start doing interviews. So that also is in process, and I'll see the fire chief tomorrow just to make sure that he's on board with that. I assume he is, he said he would be. Energy conservation, I don't have anything to report on that.
I don't either. As I understand it, I mean, I just checked online, they are, I think they're in Hanson, and they work for towns and private companies on increasing the greening, decreasing the carbon footprint. Maybe Bree knows more, they think we have, there is grant money available, and want to come in and talk to us, is that?
Yes, we, yeah, I hear about Dale, with the transition of Dale leaving.
So you'll follow up and schedule them?
I believe that he's been speaking with Christine.
Okay, so...
That's the, and she had an appointment for him to be coming in.
Great.
And the gentleman called today, said that, I gave him Christine's telephone number, he wanted to actually speak to her, to explain, to talk to him.
Okay, good.
Alright.
Okay. Correspondence, I guess.
Wow, this is... This is a good kind of chair, you just zip it through the agenda, wonderful. Alright, so let's see. Okay, so this is... Okay, so this is an email that we received from the town treasurer, letting us know that in the obtaining the loan for the new police station, she needs a certified statement from us stating that the police station will be managed and operated by the town and that the town has no contract with any other arrangement. So I'd make a motion that we ask Bree to write such a letter and that we sign it.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you think we should actually write it?
Yeah. And in fact, the sentence is right there underlined, which is the body of it.
Run it by Colleen, just to make sure it meets hers, and then we'll sign it.
The warrant signed.
Did you vote for that?
Yes, we just voted.
Okay, what was the vote? Vote, okay.
Two to nothing.
Warrant signed today by, for the Board of Selectmen. Custodial supply $63. Community paradigm $3,569. Verizon $1.17. EverSource $1,739. Contact architecture $42,900. Verizon 561.
The context, I assume, was signed to by the safety, Public Safety Board, right?
Yeah, went to, the way this is going to set up, as I understand it, in working with Colleen Thompson and Barbara, the bills will go first to P3, and they're the ones that will say, "Yeah, it's all right," then to the committee and/or Colleen, and then finally, they'll come to us and say, "It's okay to sign." So P3 gets the first look at it to make sure they're satisfied with the work.
As long as everybody's initials or signature on it, I mean, that's my auditing background, so I want to make sure we, because that's big money.
I don't think it's that formalized at this point.
It was going to be like an email. In other words, it got sent to P3, he said, "Okay to call."
Yeah, but, I mean, if he says, "Okay," he should actually just initial it or something to show. Because a verbal.
Well, I don't know if he's verbally saying or it's in an email.
I'm sending an email to Colleen. I mean, we'll have a paper trail.
There'll be a paper trail.
All right.
And then Colleen came back and said, spoke to in her email.
I'll sit down with Barbara, though. I want to make sure that, you know, there's too many things. We have an escrow account that goes back at least 20 years. It's not a lot of money, but people can't identify what that, where that money came from.
Yeah.
And it's sitting there. So now we're going to have to go back and do a, going to have to probably have somebody come in and just sit down in the cellar and go through all these old invoices. I don't want to have that to happen with this.
And I, you know, that, the present scheme that's been put together was kind of done a little bit quickly last week to take care of this bill. And, yeah, we might as well get it right at the beginning.
That's, that's my whole thing. Yeah.
Did you see, did you see Colleen? Have you ever had your email? I don't know. I'll forward it just in case you didn't get it.
No, I did see it.
Oh, you did? Okay. I didn't know what email it went to for you.
Yeah.
I had, Tara's going to send an email out to let them know that your email's not working.
Yeah. Okay.
So these are two documents for Chapter 90 for some highway stuff that I guess all the selectmen have to sign. I don't think we voted these yet. One of them is Lake Street Level with dense binder and tact, and the other's Pleasant Street, the same.
They've both been approved by James, Jim, okay.
Right. So I, do we want to vote this tonight?
Sure.
Sign it, and we'll just, we'll get Christine to sign it later on?
Yeah.
So I make a motion, we approve both of these and sign them.
Second.
Thank you.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess, so there's four things here to sign. When I first came on as a selectman, the very first night, they handed me one of those to sign first. I signed the top line, and Joe Freitas just about jumped down my throat, that, "No, that's the chair's place." And it was one of those ones, he startled me so much, I have never forgotten not to take the favored spot on that. So this is an update from a law firm letting us know that the foreclosure option for 150 County Road has been postponed to October 12th. This is a request to renew the copier lease from the police chief. He's letting us know that the present copier at the police department, the lease expires November of 2017. He requests from the board we renew the lease and that the old copier go to the fire station. So I make a motion, we go ahead and renew the copier lease for the police.
I'll second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Can I have that pulled up, John, please?
This?
No.
This one actually turns, came today. I think it turns out to be surprisingly timely. This is from Xfinity, emergency reporting procedure, letting us know about downlines or phone lines or cable that isn't functioning in an emergency situation, and gives the number for us, that is, the town to use, not a number for the general public, and then goes on to the, how to get to someone and actually speak to them.
Apropos of that, we, there's a meeting tomorrow at 10:00 with myself, the fire chief, the police chief, and the highway supervisor on this emergency management.
Yep.
So if there's anything that comes out, will be posted both on the website and on Facebook.
Good.
Yeah.
This is a letter from the fire chief informing us that he is declaring the 2003 red Ford Explorer out of service. I am remanding the vehicle back to the Board of Selectmen to be declared surplus.
I mentioned that to the service garage uptown, and they said, "It's not worth fixing at all, just, so we should probably just sell it for scrap." Now, I don't know, we can see when Christine's back. We may have to post it anyways, but it's, it's not worth fixing.
The Plumpton Express makes note about some resignations from the fire department. It makes note that sunset tonight is at 6:47, and there is a reminder that the Plumpton Community Preservation Committee is seeking new projects. And the deadline for applications, October 15th. There are the CPC plan and application and how-to are all on the webs, on the town website in the CPC section. There are also copies of all that hanging out in this lobby and at the library.
Great.
And with a bit of surprise, I report that that completes correspondence.
Great. So we have upcoming Board of Selectmen meetings, next Monday and the Monday following, September 25th and October 2nd. And we don't have any executive meetings planned.
I will just mention, and I'll mention it again next week, I think it's two weeks from tonight, October 2nd. It is possible that I will be a little late for the meeting.
Okay.
I, top priority these are, but there's something that I just must take care of. I may be on time, maybe a few minutes late. I would encourage you to start without me.
Okay.
And I'll ask Bree to keep an eye on them, that they don't, like, take my chair or...
We'll keep your chair.
See, why don't we quickly, I don't know that we have any updates, but financial management, I'm waiting for the vehicle list from the fire department and the highway department. They're supposed to be preparing it, so as soon as we have that, we'll insert it into our reporting. Public safety?
I, you know, I haven't checked. There was some chance they were going to meet this week. I think they're going to wait until next week.
I saw they canceled, yeah.
I think they probably have. I will be on top of that when they meet again.
Okay. Technology, I think pretty much what we've been talking about. Michael has the emails. We're going to have to update a number of the computers in-house, but that was done as part of the grant program, so that should be done. Volunteerism, I don't have anything or grants.
No.
Okay.
Nothing at this point.
Minutes, do we have?
Do we want, we have two minutes. Do we want to save those for next week when Christine's here?
I think we should, yeah. Okay. Anything from you, Bree, before we?
No, I need everybody to.
Selectmen's ransom raves. I'll start. This is one I seem to be doing quite a bit. The Boy Scouts are doing another Eagle project. It's just amazing. We have one of the most active Boy Scout units I've ever seen. So they were over at the library, and they were working on the grounds, and also out back here for the field. They've been working on a project. So kudos to them. They do a great job. Every time I go by the sign at the library, I think, what a project that was and how nice it was.
So my rave actually is for town meeting that was kind enough last year to vote money for the consultant in the town administrator search and the consultant in the fire study. And I'm really excited about both of them, and it's, it is money spent, it is tax money spent, and it's such good seed money, that small investment that hopefully can make a huge difference.
I agree.
Very appreciative of that.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. I have a motion to close the meeting.
With pleasure. I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second? I mean, second? Aye. Thank you. Good night.